So at this point, today's February 19th, 2014, the time is 7:05. I'm gonna ask Mr. Paul, I can't remember your last name, from Victory Outreach. He will lead us in an invocation, so we could come up here. And also, Mr. Dan Rivi, if we could come up, following the invocation, to conduct the pledge of allegiance. So I'll ask all those that are able to stand to please do so at this time. Thank you. Go ahead. What's that?
I'm not sure what you want me to do, I'm sorry.
Oh, invocation. You could just...
Prayer, I'm sorry.
Prayer, sorry about that, sorry about that.
Okay, let's go and pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you, Lord, for this time of meeting, Father. We pray for favor, God. Lord, your word says that there's wisdom in the multitude of council, Father, and we pray, Lord, that today, Lord, that your presence will be with us and things would be taken care of here tonight. God, have your way in everything that we do, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you very much. At this point, we'll ask Mr. Dan Rivi to come up, and he's gonna lead us in the like solo. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentle breezes with lingering caresses kiss the folds of no other flag which compare with it in beauty. There is no such red in budding rose, falling leaf or sparkling wine; no such white in April blossom, crescent moon or mountain snow; there is no such blue in woman's eye, ocean's depth or heaven's dome; and no such pageantry of clustering stars and streaming light in all the spectrum of the sea or sky. Our flag is bright in color, brilliant in courage, and firm in faith. To these let us add our sincere pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Council members wish to close on anyone's behalf. Okay, seeing none at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, for a roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos y bienvenidos. Councilmember Cruz Vaca, present. Councilmember, she's not here. Monica Garcia.
Yes, just wanna say, I believe she's gonna be joining us online, so I'm not certain that's occurred already.
I'm sorry, she's not live online, she will be coming in line in about an hour from now.
Alrighty, okay, alright.
Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Present.
Mayor Lieutenant Ricardo Pacheco.
Present.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present, thank you very much, City Treasurer, Maria Contreras. Alrighty, so at this point, we will go into the presentations that we have from Caltrans to provide an update on the I-10 and the I-605 project. So we'd have, from Caltrans, come on up here, thank you. You guys are very popular. Alrighty.
Well, my name is Dave Clarisi, and we're not from Caltrans.
Oh.
Actually, we're from, we're the contractor doing the flyover bridge.
Got it, okay.
This being constructed from the I-605 to the I-10 East. So we're just gonna do an update for that project tonight, the bridge that you see starting to be constructed. So the HOV project, it's continuing out there, they're getting closer to being done, and we're sort of piggybacking right on the back of theirs to complete our bridge project. And again, I'm the project manager for MCM Construction with a contractor. This is Marilyn Hayes, Mason Wood, that works with us and our public relations and information, and we have a presentation for you, and there'll be some time for your questions afterwards.
Alrighty, thank you.
Hi, yes, well, I had introduction, but I probably don't need to do it, so let's do this. Let's, this is 10 minutes, which is great, and let's start right away with getting into some basic background information. What is taking place that I think you guys are all seeing emerge from the interchange now is the construction of a direct flyover connector from the southbound 605 to the eastbound I-10. This bridge is a 30-foot-wide, single-lane bridge with a 5-foot-wide left shoulder and a 10-foot-wide right shoulder, and it includes a nearly 4-foot-high barrier on the south side facing Dalewood Street, which parallels the I-10. It is a $66 million design-build project, and we think, we expect it to be finished in the fall of 2015. There are many benefits to this connector, but primarily, they are to improve traffic flow with the use of an elevated flyover bridge over the interchange, thereby reducing commuter delays and reducing the merging of traffic and eliminating weaving, which will enhance the overall operation of the 10-605 interchange. Additionally, it will provide an improved movement of goods while enhancing safety and increasing mobility in the area. Once finished, this ramp, I mean, excuse me, once finished, this project will include a ramp metering feature, which will allow for a smoother motorist entry onto the I-10 from the bridge. This is an artist's rendering looking north from Dalewood Street, where you can see what the conceptual flyover looks like, and a decorative sound wall below, which borders the Dalewood neighborhood. We also have two aerial views, if you will. The left is a little bit better illustration, where you can see the bridge emerging on the right shoulder of the 605, looping over the interchange, and then descending along the right shoulder of the I-10. This project has been up and running for several months now, and part of it is taking pictures at each step of the way, and these basically show some pictures of progress to date, including the erecting of false work on the bridge construction, this crosses over the I-10, and pouring of foundations for the columns construction. To date, we have first, we have eight columns erected to support the underside of this connector bridge, they're on both sides of the I-10, and various different pictures. The connector is emerging, and it's creating a tunnel-like effect of false work across the I-10. And additional pictures here show a westward view of the tunnel, and a northward down, well, I guess a south view of the tunnel on the, with the ramp on the right-hand side. Additional at work being done is the building of a retaining wall for the new connector for the I-605, taking motorists west as well as east. And what the project includes is a new connector for the 605-I-10, going west, for people going west. The bottom-left corner is basically showing a concrete pavement preparation for the ramp on the bridge, and then we have some more column pictures. In the next three months, there will be continued roadwork improvement, it'll be connecting the existing roadways to the bridge. There will also be more bridge foundation work and overhead false work, as you can imagine, and there will begin to be a relocation of utility lines on Dalewood Street. Some basic project facts about the project is that the connector will be 55 feet high at its highest point over the interchange. It will touch down just east of Fraser Street off-ramp with roadway that continues underneath the Best Avenue pedestrian overcross. There are sound walls that will be constructed along Dalewood Street as part of this project, and the good news is that the majority of this bridge work is being performed at night, with the majority of the surface roadwork being performed during the day. To make residents aware of each phase of this project, we have put together basically a four-pronged community outreach program, sorry, forgot to change that, that includes weekly lane closure alerts in the form of press releases, where we send that out to the media, as well as posted on the Caltrans District 7 website, and also on our social media sites, Facebook and Twitter. We do have a social media campaign ongoing, and I'll talk about that in a minute. We also have flyer distribution, this is primarily for the surrounding impacted residential areas, should there be an alert that they need to know about with regard to street closures or full freeway closures. In addition, we have meetings at local municipalities and presentations like this one. This is just an example of a leafleting that we put out. This happened to take place when the DWP needed to put in new lines over the 10, so there were a series of full freeway closures in the night, October and November. These were hand-delivered to the residents on the north and the south side of the I-10, and they were in Spanish and English. This is our Facebook. We definitely would like you to follow us on Facebook. If you just go to Google and type in 10-605 direct connector, and you are a Facebook member, you can follow us, and we will be sending you constant alerts about what we are doing. What we think is good about this is it allows, this is actually a two-way communication, as is Facebook pretends to be, and that is an opportunity to get comments and basically take the temperature of the motorists and residents in the area. What we put up on Facebook includes a lot of the photos that we take every two to three weeks of the project. There's a FAQ section for people wanting to know more about the project, and we even have a little Did You Know series that talks about the project, the interchange and the history of the interchange itself. We decided to bring some examples of comments on the top. Basically, we have people who have been very positive about the fact that this is being built. Of course, they would like it to be finished yesterday, but for the most part, we've gotten some very, very good feedback, surprisingly, from the people who sign up with us. On the left-hand side over there in the bottom, it's basically some representation of the people who are following us, and we do respond to questions, to comments, requests for more information, and we watch this, we monitor it daily, and every 48 hours, we post comments that Caltrans has approved. I promised 10 minutes here. Our public affairs contact for most all questions regarding this project is Jessica Jovell, she is the Public Information Officer, but if you have any questions about what we've just presented, you can ask them now.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
Mayor, I just wanted to thank Caltrans and the contractor here, it's been a long-awaited overpass to see this happen, finally. Instead of us dodging through the freeway to get from one exchange to the other one, this is great that you're doing this work. My question is, what is, where is it gonna, I couldn't tell from the pictures, and you may have mentioned it, but where does the overpass end up on the 10 going east? Is it before the pedestrian overpass, or?
Yes, the bridge will continue overhead over the Athol Street Bridge, it'll go over the top of the Athol Street Bridge, but then it'll drop down and go under the pedestrian overcross.
Oh, okay.
And then you'll merge at that point and be back to the regular lanes by the time you get to the Baldwin Park exit.
Okay, and then you said that DWP already raised their power lines? Because it looked like they were gonna run.
They had to raise the power lines to allow for this bridge, and that took place, took most of last year.
Oh, okay, very well, alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you, yes, go ahead.
I have a question. Is there a reason why it's only one lane instead of two? I know most of those overpasses are two lanes.
It was in Caltrans' studies that the traffic counts only required one lane, is why it was. For the south by east, it's one lane, and also that allowed only a one-lane merge. There's not really a lot of room there before Baldwin Park, and so it would've taken more of the city to put two lanes, but I don't think it was warranted. I think the original.
Because I know, now, I'm sorry to interrupt you, coming from the 605 and you're merging, even though that merge right now is horrible, it's one lane, and it creates, it backs up the traffic on the 605 very north a lot, so I'm thinking that one lane is gonna create the same thing.
Again, I'm not a traffic engineer, and I think these numbers have been worked out. If you come north, that's a combination of a bunch of ramps, and that's one of the things that this project will alleviate, because right now, the traffic coming south has to merge with all the northern direction, north-by-east traffic. Now, that's right at the interchange. Now, the people coming south, they won't merge to almost Baldwin Park. So it'll be a series of merges, like different ramps, and there will be ramp metering, which you've seen, which has the stoplight red, so it meters so that not all the traffic tries to merge at once, which makes the right-hand lane all try to go to the second lane, and then everybody slows down. This'll allow for intermittent merging, and it really keeps the traffic flowing much better.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna thank you for the work that you do, but also Jessica Jovell, she's done a great job in always keeping us posted as to the lane closures, and so we can pass it on to our constituents, so thank her for us. Thank you.
I have a comment, I have a question, actually. Thank you very much, it's a great presentation, and I think everyone is in agreement in the room, and even throughout the community, that this is a long time coming. Do you have any idea as to when you will be closing the freeways, and for how long?
We actually don't close the freeways, like the last project, you had off-ramps closed for months at a time. We don't do that at all. We'll have night closures to work on the highway, and there aren't any anticipated closures for more than one shift at a time. And the day work is only work that could be done without affecting traffic. That's why the roadwork can be done during the day, but the bridge has to be built tonight because it's over traffic. And so we'll have individual lane closures, or a very limited four- or five-hour highway closure. It will not be the extended closures that the HOV project had, just a different type of project.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you for the presentation.
Alrighty, thank you very much, no further questions, thank you for the presentation. Alright, the next presentation that we have is the presentation about the drought situation by the following water agencies, Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water Districts, San Gabriel Valley Water Company, Valley County Water District, and the Valley Mutual Water Districts. So just introduce yourselves, the agency you're representing, thank you.
Mayor Lozano, councilmembers, thank you this evening for the opportunity to provide you with this information. We'll pull the presentation up here in a second. Thank you. Lot of media attention on the drought currently, so we'll give you a quick update on this. Appreciate how busy your current agenda is, so I'll try and move quickly through. Bit about Upper District, we are a special district, a municipal water district, we overlay 144 square miles within the San Gabriel Valley, Baldwin Park, represented by Director Brian Arias on our board. He's, of course, one of the cities that we serve, our five directors pictured there, about 900,000 people in the service area. We are one of the agencies of 26 that make up the larger regional wholesaler, the Metropolitan Water District, Councilman Pacheco having a history there directly himself. Typically, when somebody shows you a chart, and there's a lot of red on it, your immediate reaction is, this is a bad, serious situation, and that is true of the current situation of drought in California. But I want to emphasize this very first bullet up here, in Southern California, and in particular in the San Gabriel Valley, we recognize how serious this drought situation is, but we are not in a state of crisis as some parts of the state are. And the reason for that, billions of ratepayer dollars have been invested since the drought that ended in 1991 in water conservation, recycling, stormwater capture, and storage. So we will weather this storm, we have been planning for 25 years to be able to weather this storm, and working together with the other water agencies, your city and the rest of the cities in the valley, we're in pretty good shape. Of course, there is an emergency declaration by the governor, as there has been in the past in other serious droughts. The state water project, which the Metropolitan Water District is a contractor with the state of California for part of its supply from that project coming from Northern California, currently has a 0% allocation, meaning the Department of Water Resources has told Southern California, you are not going to get any water out of this project unless this situation improves. Spot market prices in the water transfer market are very high, much higher than we've seen them historically in a dry year. The highest water rights on the federal water project that serves the majority of the agriculture in the San Joaquin Valley have been cut well below their contractual minimum. I emphasize these other points to give you a sense that, yes, it is a very situation, but do not lose sight of that first bullet, we are still in pretty good shape. A lot of what's garnering the media attention that you're seeing are, there are some small communities within the state that rely on a single source of water, they have not received any rainfall this year, and have had low rainfall the previous two winters, they're in pretty bad shape. Locally, we're looking at precipitation since 2002 here, and that's measured as a percent of average. On long-term average, we get 18 and 1/2 inches of rainfall here in the San Gabriel Valley, and that's what we principally rely on to replenish the groundwater basin that we all benefit from. That's the majority of the resource we rely on. You can see the last three years, 59%, 32%, and currently, only 17% of average. Question you may have, what does it take to make up that deficit in the natural rainfall? We would need 36 inches of rain by the end of this water year, which is September, in order to just get back to average. So it is also locally a very serious drought, but again, we plan and prepare for that. Upper District specifically, working with Valley County, San Gabriel Valley Water Company, we are increasing your conservation messaging, you'll see more of that. We're partnering with the Council of Governments to push our existing conservation programs more. We're continuing to put water into the groundwater basin and replenish it as needed, of course, supporting a major effort to push for some new plumbing that'll improve the situation in the Bay Delta in Northern California, and improve the reliability of the state water project that we all rely on. The board is moving to accelerate a very large recycled water program, and we'll touch on that, and we're working statewide with our partners through Association of California Water Agencies. We often show this graph, it's a bit technical, but what we're looking at here, and apologize for the small font, on the vertical axis is elevation of the water beneath our feet, the groundwater level, measured as mean sea level. So the black line shows us, here in Baldwin Park, the key well, what that elevation is. The higher, the better, more gas in the tank. The lower, when we get below that red line, we start to watch very carefully, not at all because we're running out of water, but if you visualize this groundwater basin beneath us as a large bowl full of gravel, sand, and water, on the edges of that bowl, communities like Sierra Madre, Glendora, Azusa, they have a tougher time, their wells don't go as deep as the wells here in Baldwin Park. So we have to recognize that, and recognize we all share this resource, this groundwater basin, together, and support that groundwater level to serve those communities as well. So we start to put more water back in the basin, getting that water from the imported water system when enough isn't provided to us through local precipitation. The basin would be where that blue line is if we were not doing that practice of putting that water in the basin. Forecasted out over time, we expect that basin to continue to drop. That does not mean that we are running out of water. This is one of the largest groundwater basins in Southern California. When it's full, and that level is above what we even show on this chart, at about 300 feet above mean sea level, there's 9 million acre-feet of water in this basin. Picture a football field, put a foot of water on it, that's an acre-foot of water. Go up 9 million feet, you're 1% of the way to the moon, or 250% higher than where you fly in an airliner, it's a lot of water. A tremendous resource we have at our disposal, but we cannot take it for granted and continue to tap that resource beyond what it can naturally replenish. So we have to manage it in a way, both the volume of it and the quality of it, such that it sustains itself long-term. Recognizing that, the picture on the right shows us a familiar site, the outlet structure or the spillway at Morris Dam, owned and operated by Ela County Flood Control District, that's up in Azusa Canyon off Highway 39. That white patch of water down in the lower-right corner of that picture on the right, that's actually water that's magically coming out of the side of the hill, that's coming over 600 miles to us, all the way from San Francisco Bridge up there, the Bay Delta. That's the source of water that's really cut back in a 0% allocation today. That water comes to us from the Metropolitan Water District and the state water project. We also can rely on the Colorado River, which you see here, Hoover Dam and Lake Mead out by Las Vegas. That system is stressed too, it's in its ninth consecutive year of drought, but because there's so much storage on that system, it's continuing to supply a full allocation in metropolitan, and they're augmenting that with water transfers set up with the agricultural community in the Imperial Valley. General rule of thumb, 80% local water, 20% imported water. Recognizing those risks in the imported water system, the regional agencies like Upper District, Three Valleys, San Gabriel Valley Muni, we have plans in place that, much like your investment portfolio, you diversify to manage risk, you don't want to put all your eggs in one basket and depend solely on that imported water system to supplement your groundwater basin, you want to add stormwater capture, conservation, and recycling. We're looking at tripling our recycling by 2035. Much of that will come from a rather large project where we'll be running the water back up the San Gabriel River along the 605 freeway, pump station, a plant, treatment plant, and a pump station, eight miles of pipe, back up to the Santa Fe Dam, and putting that water back in the groundwater basin. This is highly-treated recycled water, about 50,000 acre-feet a year of this water is being used in the lower part of the watershed today to supplement that groundwater basin. We'll be replicating that operation. Where we could use your help today is to help us get this message out, we do not like to be in the practice of managing from one crisis to the next. Gradual, steady progress with water conservation is what we espouse, and that's our message. These are programs that are readily available. We've worked throughout Southern California to put up this website, socawatersmart.com, and rebates are offered directly to your constituents through this website for turf removal, high-efficiency washers, both for residential and commercial as well. So we have a menu, a suite of programs that are available that we offer to Valley County Water Districts, San Gabriel Valley Water Company, they take advantage of those, and we roll those programs out. We just finished some work right here at Morgan Park, working with Valley County Water District, large landscape retrofit, went through, surveyed the site, redid the irrigation system, working with Manny and his staff, very successful project. In our view, similarly, I see that Barnes Park is on your agenda this evening, and we've partnered with San Gabriel Valley Water Company in that project to provide a grant to retrofit the splash pad there. Very much appreciate the partnership with the city. What we're proposing to do to help package and push these conservation programs more aggressively is tapping into that good old American competitive spirit, though rather than going towards mandatory conservation that can get pretty sticky and challenging at times, we're putting up a Water Smart City Challenge in the San Gabriel Valley, bronze, silver, and gold. Bronze simply is a 10, the prize is a $10,000 grant for a water conservation sustainability project in your city. What we're asking cities to do is consider adoption of a low-impact development ordinance for stormwater capture, a model water conservation ordinance, and to host the SoCal Water Smart website on their website, on their resources page. Silver raises the bar a bit, those three things, plus the second and third-highest amount of dollars pulled down off of that rebate website into your city. And then lastly, raising the bar just a bit more for the gold level, same thing, except the number-one city by June 30, 2015 will receive a $50,000 grant towards a sustainability project for your constituents. So trying to harness the leadership from your council and other councils to push this program along. Thank you for the time.
Great, fantastic, appreciate that, thank you.
Sean, thank you, outstanding job, you've always done well. I attend your Upper Water District meetings, and they're very well-done, and I know that we went to the, I went with Sean and Director Tui, and a number of other constituents to the Metropolitan Water District, their aqueduct system, and we saw it, Lake Mead. Mead how low the water was and how serious that drought is, so it's a tour that I think every elected official should take. And one last question, to raise money, is there any chance you guys could go public and sell shares for the Upper Water District now?
Yeah. Let me, let me, yeah, let me ask a real quick question. How often do, does the San Gabriel Valley, or this particular, use the Metropolitan Water District for additional water, or is that...
Yeah, annually, we put water back in the basin, every year. The amount we put in depends on the water master, of which Mr. Riggi is a board member. And in a dry period like this, as we move into a drought, we'll start to put more in to support that basin level. If we have a very wet year, we can back off of that, of course. And so that basin is our cushion and our savings account. More in dry years, less in the flush years where it's very wet.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Hey, Dan, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the pleasure of listening.
Mayor Lozano, honorable council members, good evening. Dan Riggi, Water Resources Manager, San Gabriel Valley Water Company, board member of the main San Gabriel Basin Water Master and current president of the San Gabriel Water Association, representing all producers in the San Gabriel Valley. San Gabriel Valley Water Company is one of three water purveyors to the city of Baldwin Park. Baldwin Park is one of fifteen cities that San Gabriel Valley Water Company serves water to. We have thirty-five wells throughout the main San Gabriel Basin and thirty reservoirs. It's an interconnected system to where we can move water from any portion of our system to another portion, so therefore we have an abundant supply of water to meet the customers of the city of Baldwin Park. The customers in Baldwin Park, as well as other customers of San Gabriel Valley Water Company, have been conserving. We appreciate that. We ask them to continue to conserve water. We're not at the stage yet where it is a mandatory conservation. That may come this summer, but we're asking customers to please continue to conserve. San Gabriel Valley Water Company has rebate programs and conservation measures available to them if they would go to our website, www.sgvwater.com, and they can avail themselves of rebates on washing machines, on low-flush toilets, and other conservation kits. What Mr. Chapman has explained to you is that we have water now. Let's not waste it. Let's use it wisely and efficiently. If I may answer any questions, I'm available.
Anyone have any questions?
No, actually, I just want to thank you. I know that you do really well in conservation, and I know personally, by experience, that you help out a lot of local schools, and my school has been one of the ones to benefit from your exchange program. So thank you very much. We did a lot of great things with that money, particularly buying books and helping children that are less fortunate, so thank you for that.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
Dan, I just want to, I just want to thank you, Dan, for coming out here, taking the time and educating the public on the water industry. I know it's a very complex issue. There's a lot of different water agencies and the whole politics of water is a very complex issue to understand. I know that there was an article, I think it came out in the Tribune, and it talked about why we're not mandatory rationing, and he talked about the, we'd rather prefer to do it voluntarily. And so I think with this program that you're presenting here is very helpful to the city to participate and the public, so I want to have, work with our staff to make sure this information gets out there. And we have a link to this on our website so that everyone knows about this program. But thank you very much for coming. I really appreciate it, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Just one more comment. I'm sorry. Thank you very much for the presentation, but I thought in order for our residents to know, is there a particular time that would be better to water at this point, even though we're not conserving, or a better time to wash clothes, or your dishwasher, or your automobile?
Certainly. Best time is early morning and late afternoon before the sun comes up because of evaporation. Don't overwater the lawns. They don't need that much water. You can see if it's starting to go brown, water it. Don't let the sprinklers run. As far as washing dishes and doing laundry, let's keep, also flex our power for electrical use. There's peak hours of the day that we should not be using major appliances, so let's keep that in mind. And washing cars, well, instead of washing it once a week, let's do it every other week. We are in conservation. We are in a drought mode. If we go with a dirty car for two weeks instead of one week, I think that would benefit us all. All right? Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Once a week, or sponge bath? Okay, thank you, Linda. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Lozano, members of the council. Thank you so much for organizing this tonight and having us out here to speak with you about water conservation. I wanted to take a moment to introduce the members of the Board of Directors that represent Valley County Water District this evening that are in attendance. We have with us President Lynette Pacheco, Vice President Margarita Vargas, Director Alfonso Contreras, Director Paul Hernandez, and Director Mariana Lake. Just to segue off of what Shane from Upper District had conveyed, we are looking to partner with Upper District to promote some of the water conservation efforts and practices within the city of Baldwin Park that we do serve. We have a Public Affairs and Education Committee meeting scheduled for this Friday, February twenty-first, at twelve PM, which is chaired by Director Alfonso Contreras and co-chaired by Mariana Lake, to discuss what our conservation messaging is going to be for the constituents that we serve. We're going to be looking into a possible Water Smart software program where we would be able to provide our consumers with information about their water consumption and how that water consumption can be curtailed and lessened during these times of drought. So we're going to be looking into a program like, of that nature. Also partnering with Upper District to roll out a watershed education program for the students within the, within the service area of the district. It's already in place, and Upper District has been able to confirm a number of schools in the Baldwin Park Unified School District to participate. Valley County is going to discuss forming a partnership with Upper District and possibly co-funding some of that so we can bring the information about water conservation and education to the students within the, within the service area. In addition, the Board of Directors is currently going to review some of our promotional items, of which I've passed out to the members of the council and the electeds. Please look at that and provide the information to your constituents and have them contact us so we can provide them with additional information on what they can do to conserve around the house, both indoor and outdoor water use. We're looking to partner with Upper District regarding water-wise gardening workshops that we would love to work in coordination and coordinate with Manny Carrillo at the Park Center in order to provide information to consumers about the landscape materials that can be used to, one, beautify the garden, and, two, to save and conserve water at the same time. We're going to be looking to notify all of our customers about the drought and the situation, much of the information of what Mr. Chapman brought here tonight, and just some general tips, so that way the consumer is knowledgeable about the fact that we are in a period of drought, that there are not currently mandatory restrictions, but there could be if we don't use our water wisely now. And then finally, we do have a water conservation garden in front of our office that we had planted about a couple of years ago, and it's actually come into life a little bit more now than it had. It's finally getting settled in. We do have tags out, so I encourage your constituents to come by the office and speak with us regarding some of those drought-tolerant plants, and that could be one way for them to include the information, for them to include the material in their gardens and begin saving some water. Finally, we did coordinate with the employees that work for the parks regarding Morgan Park, and we partnered, again, with Upper District regarding the large landscape survey and retrofit program. We've had someone out working with one of the city's staff to coordinate the effort and do some irrigation retrofits that should start saving water and obviously saving some money on the bill for the Morgan Park facility. We're also looking at additional sites within our service area that could benefit from the program and looking to implement those as well. That includes, Upper District has contracted with a couple of agencies to come out, look at the sites, survey the sites, and see what the opportunities are for water conservation. And if there's opportunities, they come out and do retrofits to the system there, and then we monitor the usage after the retrofits are complete to come up with what the savings were in water. So we will be doing that with the Morgan Park site, and I will provide additional information to our Board of Directors about that, and I'd be happy to come back here to share those savings with you as well. And that's it. If you have any questions, I'm available, or have your constituents come by our office. We're always willing to help. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Just want to say, Linda, thank you very much, because I know you're the Valley County Water Agent, one of the largest of all the agencies that spoke here today that obviously work directly with the residents as well, so I want to thank you for this. And our commitment is to definitely utilize that now, even the marquee, to remind our residents about water conservation. I am definitely happy the fact that, you know, we're told that there is substantial amount of water, but at the same time, we have to make sure that we're conservative on the usage. This one, I'm going to give it over to Councilmember Cruzbaca.
I just wanted to take her.
Oh, okay. All right, any other questions?
Thank you for the bags.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Linda. Okay, and thank all the three agencies that made it. Unfortunately, mutual water, for some odd reason, did not make it, so we'll extend an invitation to them because the residents that they represent are extremely important, and they should not be ignored. So we'll have to follow up with that. All right, so at this point, no further presentations. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public communication. So anyone wishing to speak, please, you have three minutes. Thank you. Good evening.
Three minutes is not long enough for me to speak. Number one, Caltrans, you do great freeway work, but your cleanup, very poor, very poor. I've been calling, I think Mrs. Villio, number times, and still, you guys got a mess. The directors that run this project, very poor. Twenty-seven beds? I want income. You people got to understand that. You make big money. Who's going to pay for that if you run out of money? Huh? I know. Look at me. Look at me. We need revenue. You know what that means? Tax money. Tax money. So we taxpayers don't have to keep paying all of it. Where is the businesses that we need? Along the freeway right there where they're going to put these crazy walls up, you ain't got, nobody looks at the freeway. Can't look at Baldwin Park, because where'd it go? They're down the freeway somewhere. Remember the last time I spoke, I told you guys we need water barrels? That's what we need. So when people turn on their shower and they waste two gallons of water, and they pour it down the sink, down the drain, here I come, Long Beach. They could save that water. Use it for their yard, use it to wash your car. They got tons of way, that's what I do. We save those two gallons. Ends up like maybe twenty-five gallons, easy. I use it for my planters. I don't wash my car, I just rinse it off and then I wipe it. There's a lot of ways to save. The project you wanted to put up over here that you showed all these pictures, I noticed you took them down. How much money are we making off of this stuff, folks? You know, I keep telling you guys, and I don't see no money, no taxpayers' money coming in. Revenue, that means they pay us to work in our city. They pay us to live in our city. We pay enough, but we don't have enough businesses. How many businesses have we got in the last two years? How many? We lose one, two, three, four, and multi-little businesses. Where are all them people going to go? They're going to go somewhere else. That's not very good. Also, where's all the money that we're going to make off of this so-called project that you're going to put a garage up for people to live in? This is ridiculous. You want to build something, build some homes...
Mr. Luna, your time's up.
There you go with my three minutes.
All right, good evening.
Hello, I'm Julian Casas, head boxing coach over at Morgan Park, also longtime Baldwin Park resident. As you know, the wages of the boxing instructors has become a public issue. In Baldwin Park, we have the lowest-paid instructors in the San Gabriel Valley, and we have the highest-paid administrators in the San Gabriel Valley as well. In surrounding cities, you don't find such a huge gap. It's been this way for years, but that doesn't make it right. It's ironic that the youth, the youth here, a lot of these boxers right here, they had to take a stand to get you to invest in them and to invest back in our boxing club, which really, it never should have been cut in the first place. But I just want to tell you, as you invest in these large development projects and like the buildings of more affordable housing, I want you to take responsibility for the increased youth population and all the social problems that are directly correlated with those types of projects. Invest in our youth. Invest in our youth. Invest in their future. You know, the role as a boxing coach or boxing instructor, it's a large responsibility, and it's a big commitment for somebody. You put in a lot of hours on a daily basis. Yes, we share responsi, yes, we share responsibility, and it's a big commitment. We share knowledge with the, with these students. We teach fitness, but the relationships that you build with our, with the youth is, it's We're mentors to our youth, and like it or not, it builds bonds that last a lifetime. I mean, I'm kind of, I'm shocked, but I'm just like, I mean, it means a lot to me to see these guys here. I didn't realize so many people would come out, come out today, and guess they heard about what's going on. And we are, in a sense, barriers to those at-risk youth. However, I mean, there's different degrees of how at-risk they are, some not so much, but we make a difference in their lives and, and, you know, even, even now, I think one of the oldest one I have here is about, I've known him for like fifteen years, maybe, maybe longer, and we're pretty tight, but... Another going on about what we are, we advocate, we're advocates, we're friends, advisors, and I just want to reiterate the importance of it, but we're mentors, and we provide guidance and support. And in essence, we help them, we help these people achieve like, who potential, you know, in their lifetime. And as mentors, you know, I believe we help to make them make better choices, choices that could undermine their future.
Mr. Casas, your time's up.
Hi, my name is Paul Eslina. I'm the Youth Minister slash Pastor of Victory Outreach in the beautiful city of Baldwin Park, and I just want to thank you, Mayor Lozano, as well as Councilmember Cruzbaca, for attending our one-year special service that we had a few weeks ago. And I just want to introduce myself and our ministry to you guys. We're a ministry that are, we're dedicated to developing the personal lives of young people. We have innovative strategies to reach teens in our environments. A lot of parents of every generation have experienced anxiety over their young people, and the jeopardy that threatens our teens today is unmatched in history. Victory Outreach has risen to the challenge with a unique strategy. We're called God's Anointed Now Generation. We believe that it's our time now, young people, to, to take a stand and to be the ones that start changing our community and, and becoming new people. We believe in reaching a wide range of young people, from the urban youth to the church kids, excuse me. Also, our youth ministry Victory Outreach, we're highly committed to evangelism, to Bible studies and prayer, and the zeal of our youth attracts other youths and motivates the most seasoned church member. And a few examples, some of the things that we do is we have mission trips. A lot of our youth, they go to other cities, other states, other countries even, and they're there spreading the gospel. We also have conventions and conferences yearly that are for our youth ministry and for youth. We also have something called Passion for Purity that encourages young people to not have sex before they're married, and if they have been, that they would make a, they would make a pledge not to anymore until that time comes. And we're also dedicated to leadership development. The youth of today are the leaders of tomorrow, to prepare youth for the responsibilities that lay ahead. Leadership development is central to Victory Outreach youth ministry. We believe that we, it's time to train our young people now, that way when they become older, when they become young adults, that they're successful in everything that they do. Victory Outreach highly values the potential of young people and invest considerable time and resources to ensure the quality and effectiveness of this ministry. Just to real quick, what we're doing in our local church, we're working with young people. We have some teenagers, junior hires, high schoolers, and young adults... We have some teenagers, junior hires, high schoolers and young adults that attend our service. We just started a service that's actually going on right now at our church. But I just came here just to, we want to partner up with you in any way we can to help our youth in this beautiful community. And we're working with people right now that are, that were suicidal, but aren't suicidal anymore. We're working with young people that were gang members, but aren't gang members anymore. And we're also working with people that were drug addicts, but are no longer drug addicts because of Jesus Christ. So, I just wanted just to introduce ourselves and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Paul. Say, say hi to Pastor for me.
Thank you very much.
Take care, guys.
Well, hi, my name is Derpy Alvesensio. And, I, well, I've lived here from Ballin, in Ballin Park for over like five, ten years. And, well, we're out here because regarding Julian, our, our coach. My favorite coach trainer is Coach Julian, because ever since he started boxing, he's like helped me out, like, he's taught me a lot and, he's just, he's been there for me and he kicked me out like off the streets. And now I'm like unhealthy and I just want to thank him.
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, move along.
Hi, my name is Oscar Funes and I'm here to represent or support Julian Casas in behalf of, and Luis Rosales. On behalf of the payment they get for training us each hour. And, one thing that isn't fair is, they get, they get paid on less than a McDonald's person. And, he makes eight hun, eight, he makes eight dollars and eighty cents an hour. While Manny Corillo Jr. makes two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, which doesn't even have education or a degree. And, well, basically not to show disrespect, but is uncultivated, not highly educated. While, on the other hand of Julian Casas, has a college degree. And, that doesn't seem fair. We'll have to see what you guys decide. And, the moments that you create with these people, the coaches, everything, the bond, and you just get used to them, you feel like you've known them for a good time. And, training with, with them and motivating you each day and just giving it all. And I know some of us want to become, I don't know, professional boxer, go to the Olympics or something. And, the way that he teaches us, he, like more highly respected and more seen into. Because he actually gives us advice for life and all that stuff. And, he should be paid, you know, more than someone that just wears a suit and does nothing. Not just to show disrespect, but yeah. And, that's it. And, and the last thing I like to say is, all work is- Alright, I'll try again. All work is what? Alright, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Uh, hi, good evening. My name is Angel Rodriguez and I'm part of the boxing team. And, first thing I would like to say is to thank Julian for showing us how to box and a lot of other stuff, but, I just don't think it's fair how it's paid eight dollars, eighty cents. And, I think he should be, you know, just raised up more, because he's been there fourteen years. Forty cents, more isn't enough. And, you know, he has a college degree and everything and Manny Corillo makes twenty, two hundred fifty-five dollars an hour without a college degree, so, I was just, you know, doesn't seem right. And, I would like to thank him, another thing for, you know, fighting for us, so we have more time in the gym and, you know, that's about it. Best memory, when I first learned to keep my hands up, not get hit, was my favorite memory. That's about it, alright.
Hi, my name is Rene Huerta and I know Julian since I was nineteen. Nineteen, we all know at that age, how we are, you know? We're looking for trouble, we know everything. And he was the same age as me and he took me. I went to the gym and, like I said it before, I went to the gym and I wanted to crush skulls. I had, I went there for all the wrong reasons. Between him, thank you Julian, between him and Chief, they helped me a lot, alright? And I've seen them a bunch of times. Two, three times a week, when we used to have the gym for five days or four days at least, reaching out of his pocket and giving money to the kids. Hey, go buy wraps, go buy a mouthpiece, go get a couple hamburgers to kids that were hungry. And I didn't know there was money out of his pocket and I didn't know that it was how much money he was making. And now that I know how much money you guys are making, especially you, I mean, how can you leave it with yourself? Two hundred fifty-five bucks an hour, eight bucks an hour, does it seem fair? I don't think so. I'm angry right now, actually. I want to say a lot of things, and my hands are shaking, because I'm angry. What you guys are doing to this guy is not fair, alright? I don't know how you're making that much money. You and me, we have something in common. Neither of us have a college degree. And neither of us is going to be remembered after our lives are gone. But he is, going to be remembered. Year after year, I've seen kids going by the gym, alright? And he was working on a bunch of kids and now they're grown men, the same as me. And they look at him on the street and they all recognize him and they giving his respect the same way as I do and respect is earned. I'm sorry if I get this upset, but I mean, seeing all this, for all these years, nobody's doing anything. And you know what's going on. And look at me when I'm talking to you Manny Corillo. You know what's going on and you do nothing. Why? Because your pockets are full, huh? Thank you for everything.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, move along with public communication.
Hello, my name is Bruno Pacina and I have boxed for over four years at Ballin Park Boxing Gym. And I have never met anyone more industrious than my coach Julian Casas. He developed, he devoted his life to train and teach the boxers at the gym. Each and every day, kids and young adults like myself are being changed into better people due to the discipline he has taught us by this magnificent coach. He has brightened many of our futures. And, boxers who wish for a future in the sport, they need that type of coach in order to succeed, as my coach needs to be fairly benefited. He's our leader for this boxing club, we would not be where we are without him. This is for the livelihood of the boxing club and community. If we're given a better and fair pay for my coach, who we look up to and admire, we will become a better and stronger boxing club and community as a team. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Good evening.
My name is Julian Casas also, I'm Julian's father. I walked into Starbucks today and I met Paul there by coincidence. I was shown some figures on the pay scale of coaches in other cities and the coach here in Ballin Park, which is my son Julian, and other one or two others. And it's very unbalanced, very. And it's a, it's a shame that he would be called in for a, for a meeting to discuss his pay and them knowing the, the very little raise that was offered after all these years compared to the other cities. And, I just would like to say that's very, very sad that Ballin Park is carrying on like this. And, I'm just thankful that the, the ones that are out of office that were suffering from the city are gone. And I, I hope that the others that are doing the same thing to us taxpayers will also be gone soon also.
Hello, my name is Jose Yoa and I'm just here, I'm from Ballin Park, the city of Ballin Park and I'm just here to thank, well, thank Julian that, because he is helping me work for a professional boxing career and I'm thinking of, but, let's see how much he's getting paid. It's very embarrassing to say, but, yeah, eight dollars and fifty cents. And while this guy over here, yeah, full pockets. But, I just want to say that I'm thanking Julian for all this hard work and for the memories that once I, the first time I came in that gym and saw him, like, I knew he was gonna like take, like, be dedicated and like, he's showing me to be dedicated. My other trainer too, Luis Rosales, is working hard for me and just here to, to thank him, but it's not fair what you guys are paying him, so, yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Manu Carrera and I'm here to support not only Julian, but to support the other coaches. And, Julian, he's more than a coach, he's a mentor to us, he helps us with a lot of things. He goes above and beyond most coaches. Best memory I had, when we went to run at Mount Sac, he ran with us. Most coaches wouldn't do that, they would just tell us to run. But he, he actually ran with us, he helped us, he gave us motivation to run. And, in the gym, he also helps us too. I used, well, I'm, I'm still like, you know, I'm still a little bit like big, but with this program, I've lost a lot of weight. He's helped me so much and it made me feel better for myself, feel better about myself. It gave me just courage to just stand up and do something for myself. And I would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alejandro Vera, I've been dating for Ballin Park for my whole life and I've been a boxing pro for about four years. And like Julian, I have good memories on, like he'll take us running, take us out to eat after. And like, there was, there was a time where I couldn't afford boxing gloves, but Julian, like, he, he paid them out of his pocket, like, like most coaches wouldn't do that nowadays, you know, like, they expect you to pay for everything, but Julian's not like that and, and I want to ask, why is Julian like only getting made eight dollars and eighty cents? Well, he got a forty cent raise after fourteen years, just nothing. While the director is getting paid two hundred fifty-five an hour, two hundred fifty-five dollars an hour, like, that makes no sense. I'm just wondering. And like, the cities around here, the, the coaches, they get paid more than, than Ballin Park, all of them, like all of them in the Sangre Valley. And all the, the directors in the Sangre Valley, Ballin Park is the highest. That makes no sense either to me and that's why I'm wondering, after knowing Julian for so long, he's getting paid so little and he's a good, he's a good coach. Like, after training with him, like, I have like a higher mental stamina, like, and been helping me out as a mentor too, with school, all that. A good coach and that's all I have to say.
Good evening, city officials, mayor, councilmembers, my name is Christian Flores. First of all, I want to thank you guys for keeping our boxing program. You guys don't know how much it means to me and my peers over here. And, Julian Casas, I met around nine years ago. And, he is, 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 is more than a friend to me now. He's, he's a great guy and committed to his job. And now, I was brought upon what he has to deal with and, and fourteen years working here, making eight dollars an hour till this point now, in the present. You don't have to be a genius, but, living expenses do change a lot over ten years. And, to have this program still and to enjoy it is a lovely thing. And, it'd be great for, for it to continue. And, I guess that's all I got to say for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Luis Piseño and I'm, first of all, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank my coach Julian for everything he's done. And I'd just like to say one quote to all you people. If you think, if you think of life as, as a big pie, you can try to hold the whole pie and kill yourself trying to keep it, or you can, or you can slice it up and give some to the people around you and you will still have plenty for yourself. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Abel Vazquez, I'm in the boxing program with Julian. Well, I just started like last year, but in like November and December, so I don't really have a lot of time there. But, it's really fun, because before I went into boxing, I would always be on the streets with a skateboard, always getting into trouble and they actually kicked me out of my old school for that. So, now I go to the, now I go to Sierra Vista. And, since then, since I joined boxing, I've actually been wanting to go to boxing straight after school. So, I wouldn't be bored and, pretty much fun, because the greatest memory I had was the first time I sparred and I sparred and I almost fell. So then, the, when they finished, the day after, I came back and they worked with me on my footwork and everything. So, that's how I could, I got like, I wanted to keep on going. So, I don't think it's fair that Julian gets paid, especially since he's getting paid like over two hundred. So, eight bucks, not even more than what my mom makes. And she's like just a nurse's, or a doctor's assistant. But, yeah, it's really not fair.
Alright, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Hello, my name is Gonzalo Vazquez, I've only been here in the boxing program for two days. But, like, I already, it's not fair what Julian gets paid and what he gets paid. Julian only gets paid eight dollars, but, he should be getting paid more for like training us and like, all of, all of that. Oh, well, I haven't been here that much, so like-
Well, thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Michael Guian, I'm from Ballin Park. And I like, I'm here to discuss the inequality of pay in the parks and rec, and more specifically the boxing program. Julian Casas is a great boxing coach and he's been coaching for fourteen years and he's getting paid eight eighty an hour. Remind you, fourteen years, when I started my first job, I got paid nine dollars. It was a temporary job and I started off like that. Compared to fourteen years, unbelievable. I would like to, and Julian does so much, and he does much more than just coach boxing, he would do anything for, from kids, teens to even adults, he could, he's like a counselor to all ages. And this pay issue shouldn't, we shouldn't be here right now. Um, Manny Carrillo gets paid two hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour and he should, we should be up here, there should be no question about Julian's pay should be so little. If Julian should ask for a raise, he should, he should give it to him, no problem. It's sad that we have to be up here asking you guys. Yeah, it's really sad, I wish we could be up here and saying, "Good job Manny Carrillo, keep doing what you're doing," but sadly, we can't, so we have to voice our opinions. And yeah, the inequality of pay is um unacceptable for the work and the quality of work Julian Casas does and all the boxing coaches. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Manuel Garcia, uh, I've been with the boxing program about three years now. Uh, when I started, I was five-nine, I'm still, I still am, two hundred and sixty-five pounds, the doctors said I was morbidly obese, I couldn't go a couple feet in my house without breathing heavy. And I started uh boxing and Julian, he never gave up on me, even though I usually gave up a lot myself during the training. He offered me rides when I couldn't go home, get picked up. And I didn't know how much he was getting paid. He'd probably get tired and hungry and he'd give me money for food and drinks. This is bad. Right now, I weigh a hundred and ninety-six pounds, but it's not fat. It's mostly muscle, thanks to Julian, I'm a lot healthier, my cholesterol's good again, so is my blood pressure. I just can't, yeah, you guys could do something, somebody, that's so nice. I suffer from anxiety and boxing is the only release I have. And when you guys took the day's weight of three days, it was terrible. I'm happy you guys put it back, uh, gave more days, gave more money to the program, but pay, that's ridiculous, he's a great guy.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Eric Garcia and uh first of all, I wanna thank Julian for everything he's done for me. Uh, recently, I started attending Cal Poly Pomona and uh we have a quarter system at that school and every ten weeks, I started going accustomed to, every time I log into my account, I, I see uh two thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars waiting for me to pay so I can uh go on to the next quarter. So around those times, I really don't have uh any money in my pocket and Julian's a really nice guy, uh, he knows, he knows that boxing uh really relieves my stress from midterms and finals and anything like that, five, five-page uh projects that I have to do and stuff like that. And sometimes I don't have a single dollar in my pocket and Julian would offer me, also offer me food, he would uh, if I didn't have money to pay for the membership for the month, he would offer me money. I just wanna thank him for everything he's done, thanks Julian. And uh, I also wanna thank all the boxers that came up to speak, cause, I mean, I know it's, it's not that easy to come up here and do public speaking, when I first started coming up here, I mean, I was terrified, but little by little, I got better. The only way to get better at public speak, public speaking is to practice and keep on doing it over and over, I guess. First off, I mean, it's hard for me to believe that we're, what we are discussing tonight. I mean, Julian has dedicated over fourteen years to the city's boxing program, whether it's from teaching basics to a new member, holding the mitts for some of the hardest hitters in the gym, Julian never complains because he knows that his actions impact the lives of the young, of our youth. Julian also understands that his actions help forge boys and girls into young men and women. The reason why I cannot believe uh the conversation that we are having tonight is because after fourteen years, I was seriously only paying him eighty, and the fact that we have to go through so much trouble to get him a raise, um, this is Manny Carrillo's job, we pay him two hu- two hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour so he can handle everything that happens in parks and recs, however, he gives, there's no level of accountability because he gives, he's off, he's giving you the burden of going through uh, to gain him a new raise, that's your job, you should, you should have done this weeks, months ago, but we have to go through the hardships of going and gathering everybody up to come speak. These actions reflect upon the fact that we are not investing in our youth. As a city, we ask ourselves questions about stopping violence, high school dropouts, obesity teen pregnancy, the question shouldn't be, what can we do to help these individuals? The question should be, what can we do to prevent these individuals for, to go in this path? Again, we fail to invest in our youth, boxing provides a place where teens and adults can relieve stress and most importantly, stay off the streets. I ask, I ask that Julian gets a worthy raise because he has earned it. It is hard not, it's hard knowing that the new majority inherited a close to bankrupt city because the previous regime had no, absolutely no idea what they were doing, but the time has come to ask ourselves, what can we do to pre- prevent things like teen pregnancy? And the answer is, start investing in our youth, give our coaches a better wage, so in return, we can attract other coaches and more childrens can join our city programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Hi, my name is Larry Barra and I wanna talk about Julian right now, that he's a really good mentor and that, actually, applied for a scholarship, but I needed a reference and I asked Julian if he could be that reference and he wrote a good letter. I turned it in and I think if it wasn't because of him, I wouldn't have gotten that five-hundred dollar scholarship, but I thank him a lot for that. And he helps me a lot with school, boxing, I mean, I started six years ago, so, can't believe it, like, I didn't even know he was making eight dollars and eighty cents. I see him giving money for drinks to kids or, I remember buying people gloves and even give, buying me hand wraps when I needed new ones. A good person, I just hope you guys can make a change in his wage, he does deserve it. I work at Pizza Hut right now and one of the employees is a manager, only worked for six months, he's already making ten dollars an hour. Julian, working as a boxing coach for fourteen years, only making eight dollars and eighty cents, can't believe it. I hope you guys can make a change. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Paul the Boxing Lawyer Cook, you all know who I am. We're here today for Julian Casas and Coach Luis Rosales. And Ballin Park, as I've shown in my research, is the lowest-paid uh city for boxing coaches with eight forty an hour. It's very shameful with the city of commerce making thirty dollars an hour averaging out twenty dollars an hour. The boxing, however, director is the highest-paid in LA County with one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars a year, two hundred and two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. He is making about two hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour, so what that means for Julian Casas is that he's getting paid a little bit more than a McDonald's entry worker. And I think this is gonna be a good analogy as I speak, because I don't know, this is the weirdest corporate governance I have ever seen in my entire life and I'll explain why. If we're in McDonald's, is the CEO and director's going to approve a wage of an entry-level worker? Why is the part-time raise being presented to the council members and mayor? There's only two, I have nothing but questions and not that many statements this time. My first question is, is it because the director that's getting paid two hundred thousand dollars a year incompetent? Or is it because he isn't empowered? I don't know. I don't know any director that puts the part-time stuff, part-time employee wages back to the direct, the board of directors, it doesn't make sense to me. And if the council does approve that raise, here's my question, do all part-time employees have to come up here? Do all full-time employees have to come up here? Why, as one of our boxers had said, do we pay him two hundred thousand dollars an hour? For you to decide the problems and issues? Now, an insider had told me why, because he wants to put it on the council members so he could say it's the council members' fault that Julian doesn't get a fair raise? Is that right? I don't think that's right, you guys pay him enough to take this type of burden, this is not the job of the council members. Now, I've been ignored quite a bit in the last six, seven months here, and that's fine if you wanna continue to do that, because next week, I hope that we have a resolution in terms of his pay and the processes. And if not, I'll just have to keep dredging up more information and under great stress, he's outed a lot of information, you can't trust him, you can't trust him at all. There's one solution to all this, if you say he has no money, what the, what the board of directors do decide is the director's salary. You could give him a pay cut, it's not that hard. Give him a pay cut and have fair, fairer wages for the rest of the workers, if not, the, uh, Rudy's old position is filled by someone that's making twenty thousand dollars more than he should. And if you look at Maria Moreno, who's making about ninety thousand dollars a year, kids, she doesn't have a college degree either, she just graduated from Ballin Park High School, there seems to be something wrong with that, there really does. The last two questions that people are gonna ask all of you is, what did he do for you? And why didn't you get rid of him when you knew all this stuff?
Mayor, his time's up.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you very much, okay.
Oh, Thomas Carey, I thought when you had a college degree, you got paid more, I guess that doesn't count here. Uh, seems to be something wrong with that, that somebody who doesn't have a degree gets paid two hundred thousand dollars a year and has a car and all the gas he can guzzle. I would think with, you'd have some type of conscience that that would bother you, you wouldn't sleep good at night, but maybe, maybe you don't have any conscience, there's a lot of people that don't have that. Um, I would think you'd uh pay for your own gas and leave that gas and that money here in the city to pay this man what he should be paid, maybe fifteen dollars an hour as opposed to what I was getting fifteen years ago when I was still had it working. I was making more than nine dollars an hour fifteen years ago and everything has gone pshh through the roof. I mean, and now, on top of everything else, you gotta pay for your own health insurance. Target just cut off all their part-time employees, they gotta pay for their own health insurance. What's that gonna cost? Two, three hundred dollars a month, maybe more? So he's had eight eighty and has a college degree for eight dollars and eighty cents and he stayed here for fourteen years? Uh, he's had loyalty, but maybe it's been misplaced, maybe he should work in the other city that's paying, you know, nineteen dollars an hour or the other one is paying twenty, rather than giving people fifteen thousand dollars more a year and, and that, and pay, which in turn boosts their pension at the end when they retire. They're gonna be living good and he's still gonna be struggling on eight eighty an hour, ten dollars an hour when they raise it in a couple of years? Seems rather ridiculous. Uh, and one other thing that's pretty stupid around here, this project that you wanna build over here and jam it in there? You want projects, low-income projects in the middle of downtown Ballin Park, is there something wrong still here? I, I don't get it. And this thing with the Caltrans too, one lane, they've got room at thirty feet to put two lanes across that, that over crossing. I guess they're guaranteeing them some work down the road when they have to come back and re-strike that to two lanes over there. I mean, they, they do stupid things too. But this thing with the wages, I spoke about this before, a person that doesn't have a college degree gets nine hundred and ninety-three dollars, one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars a year and a person that has the degree gets less than nine dollars, what I was getting fifteen years ago when I was working still? Don't you see something wrong with that? I do.
Mr. Carey, your time's up.
Okay, thank you, thank you Thomas, appreciate that.
Good evening, mayor and member of the council and staff and member of the community. My name is Mariana Lake, I'm resident for the city of Ballin Park for twenty-seven years and also on our water board member director from Valley County Water District. I am here tonight to wanna say thank to Upper San Gabriel Valley, uh, to Upper San Gabriel Water Municipal District for the presentation, also to San Gabriel Valley Company and also to Valley County Water District. There, I think this is a presentation that we should have more often and also, I just want to disappoint with Valley Mutual, because this is not the first time they invite, I believe you invited two years ago to them to come here, they never come. We have like a one thousand five hundred resident, they are belong there and they don't do anything, plus the water is expensive, their meeting's supposed to be public, it's none, they say they're gonna have a meeting and this man and then they don't have it, a lady there, they think, she thinks it's the owner and those resident, each resident is owner of the, of the park. So I think we need to, uh, you need to address that, mayor, and it's so important, because how the, the water is right now dry is critical, so I think it does uh correspond to you to be a little bit more aggressive with that district.
Okay, but thank you, thank you very much.
And also, I wanna just say, uh, talk about, a little bit about the director Manny Carrillo. Since I'm twenty-seven-year resident for the city of Ballin Park, I, the first time that I come, when I came to, when I moved to Ballin Park, I attend to the park with my little kid, at that time, was little. And I enjoyed the class, the, the time the park offered, ballet, Spanish dance, a lot of classes for little kid. And it was so small, they don't have no, no life in the park, nothing, we have a group of parents, when we get out from the park, we, we had to get up, you know, try to be safe, because maybe we can be, it was a lot of people, key, do a lot of play, play card, very disgusting was at the time. So it was a transition, it was attended by Gary, was the, the director from the park at that time, and then later come, uh, there was a, a change in the city of Ballin Park with the new mayor, uh, Fidel Barcas in nineteen ninety-two and we changed all, the park was completely changed. And we have a, a Mr. Ralph Nunez, he was a board member director for the, uh, for the unified district and then he come a director from the park, he was excellent. At that time, I paid two dollars for the class. Today, uh, those, so many years, everything is increased, the park is increased, was three, three, four parents who have a kid in this, in the school, in the, in the program at that time. Now, we have seniors.
Mr. Lake, your time's up.
Okay, well, let's see.
All right, thank you very much, thank you.
Hi, Margarita Vargas, um, I just wanna thank you because I saw in the cons, in the consent calendar, uh, about the traffic signal in La Rica and Los Angeles Street and Ohio and Ballin Park. You know, since I've been living in Ballin Park more than thirty years, never crossed La Rica and Los Angeles, because it's too dangerous. And I, I, I used to get really upset with my husband, cause he always wanted to go through, through there and my son does the same thing. But Ohio Street and Ballin Park, I really, I don't cross that either, I go to Olive, Olive Street so I can cross in the light, cause I'm really afraid. But uh, I'm more afraid of the students that cross in Ballin Park and Ohio Street, they cross for Holland School, um, Middle School, uh, Santa Fe and Garry's. And so, um, I'm happy to see that you're, you know, trying to put a, a light there for the safety, because it's, we already have so many accidents there. Uh, one year in Mother's Day, uh, a young boy was killed, he was in his scooter and the mom saw him when he was hit and, and right there in Ohio and Los An- in Ballin Park, whatever. So, and another thing that I'm really happy is about the Walnut Creek Nature Park, that you're doing something too about it, so thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor, council members, all present, Margadite Terrellis, longtime resident. Um, first of all, I have to remind people here that there is more than one religion in this country, some of us- there is more than one religion in this country. Some of us are Jews, some of us are Muslims, some of us are Buddhists. Wonderful that we open up with a prayer, but please, let's not direct it to one particular religion. Otherwise, we're gonna have a lawsuit, and I hate to be the one to do it. Manny, I know they think you're making a million bucks here. But believe me, if I had your job, no matter how much this city was paying me, I would have quit. With all the shenanigans that you have to put up with, listening to these young men and women, or men, I don't understand what's with this boxing team. I never see women here. Don't they know that Muhammad Ali's kids, daughters fight, and so does Frasier's kids and whatever? Is this just one-sided? What happens if they point at you and they snap a finger at you and you don't get up and talk? Are you out of the boxing team? I don't know. You've got quite a job. You've gotta take care of us senior citizens in the pool, the young kids in the pool, the parks, all the parks, all these programs with hardly any money. Boxing is not the only thing we have here. Granted, I do concur that this young man should get better pay. That's inevitable. It is hard work. It is a big responsibility. This man has a great heart. But you should be grateful, number one, that he has a job. Some of us can't even get a job, let alone that, you know, the economy is bad. But no, it should be a lot more. And one thing I wish that he would do is teach these children not to allow anybody to come here and tell them what to say and what to do like a puppet on a string. That's terrible. I think they call that communism, when you're told what to say and what to do. Now, I know men and women that make more than people with a college degree, and I'm talking beyond bachelor's, master's, and even a doctorate degree. They're called plumbers. They're called carpenters, drywall. You know, you don't have to have a degree in America to make big bucks. You just have to have the knowledge, abilities, and skills. So, you know, granted, we all deserve raises, but if you give one person too much of a raise, what about the other people? There's a lot of people in this city that have gone many years without a raise, but they're grateful that they have money to pay for their home, to pay for their schooling, to pay for what little they have. You know, be grateful for what you've got. Could be worse. You could be without a job. I haven't had a job since 2010, and you know, I'm making it on the little bit that comes in. Again, Manny, you know, despite what anybody says, you've got quite a lot of headaches. And we're throwing money away when we throw out a chief of police, I think we're paying her, maybe six months' worth of...
Mr. Terellis, your time's up.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Alfonso Contreras from Baldwin Park. First of all, I wanna thank the staff and everyone involved in making the presentations on the water district, and I think it's really, really necessary. I think we should have more of those. The water industry is super complex. Just in Baldwin Park alone, you have four different water entities that serve the city of Baldwin Park. In addition to that, there's some of them are private. You have a county water agency, which I'm a member of, the Valley County Water. You've got mutuals, and you also have municipalities that are all water entities. In addition to that, we have inner roads that travel. We look at it from freeways and highway. We had a presentation earlier with Caltrans. The water industry, unfortunately, we don't get to see it, but you can talk about highways, freeways, roads. And the water system, you've got the very, very same system. You've got transmission, distribution, and service, and basically the pipes are a different size. And I'm hoping down the future, we continue, I know that I talked to Daniel Wall about having utility meetings, not just with the water agencies, but again, with the gas, the water, electricity. And I was corrected by Terry Muse. She told me that also waste management happens to be a utility, so I stand corrected. So maybe in the near future, we can get together, because they're all needed. I know that also in your project, you're talking about new structures, new buildings. They're all gonna be needing water, electricity, gas, cable, and so on and so forth. We have to make sure that we all provide the proper utilities needed to make our city prosperous. So with that, I'm gonna close, and hopefully, we'll have utility meetings with all the utilities. Mr. Daniel Wall, I'm giving you a little bit of homework, and I'm not your boss, but it's something to think about. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Hey, Rafael Gonzalez. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lozano, honorable council members, elected staff, city staff. My name is Rafael Gonzalez. I'm the manager of the Baldwin Park Library, which is currently being refurbished. And the latest news that I have is that the library will most likely be open in the middle of June 2014. I wanna thank this council, and I wanna thank city staff, particularly Manny Lozano and his staff, for being so generous and so professional to our staff, county library staff, from our administration to line staff. You've been tremendous, Manny. You've been very, very flexible and very, very professional. Each time that we've requested something from you, either yourself, you always communicate, you always answer me, or one of your staff members always contacts me. So some of the allegations that have been made, I think they're just very, very one-sided, and it's disappointing to hear that. I've known Manny for probably, I would say probably about 13 years or so. The Friends of the Baldwin Park Library have two annual book sales, and Manny and his staff are very, very helpful to the Friends of the Library, which currently, thanks to this city council also, are using one of the rooms as the Baldwin Park Library temporary location is using one of the rooms in the community center. You've allowed, whether it's tables, chairs, what have you, but primarily tables, which facilitates and makes it a lot easier for our Friends of the Library to conduct their book sale. So we're indebted to you, Manny, and to your staff, and you've demonstrated nothing but professionalism to me and to our staff and to our administration, our regional administrators as well. So we ought to be proud of the work that you do, and there's just so many, so many things. And I know that there's been cutbacks, but I've attended some wonderful summer concerts, and that is not easy to put together. So it's not easy, and it's really the pride of the San Gabriel Valley, because, I mean, it draws people from everywhere. And, you know, so many other activities that go on in the city. So there's just, what Magda said, it's very true. I don't envy your job, Manny, but thank you, and thank you for the support of the Baldwin Park Library.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you.
Just for correction, you said Manny Lozano?
What did I? I'm sorry. Manny Carrillo. Sorry about that.
I'll take part of it.
Mayor Lozano. Manny Carrillo.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All righty.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Rios. I wanted to talk about that proposal that we had last meeting. About that...
The project.
The project. You wanna call it a project. You know, you try to put a one-bedroom, what is it, not even 600 square feet? That's not even a bachelor's, you know? And you think that you're just gonna have one family on that? No, they're not. You lived in Southern California long enough. You put one family in there, you have two families in there. You have one car there, you're gonna have three cars in there. All families, especially Hispanics, Orientals, they all have more than one car. Where are we gonna park all that? Are we gonna have the ref, you know, right, we have, while they have the police station right here, they can direct traffic going in and out? You know, especially in the mornings when they're going to work. You're having policemen come in, city workers come in, people coming out from those apartments. We gotta think this over. You know, where are they gonna park all those cars? It's something that, you know, why are we really gonna get our revenue back? Probably nothing. You know, it's gonna be a eyesore for the people of Baldwin Park. But that's enough about that. Another thing is, I gotta recommend the police department. They've been doing a beautiful job. Getting people off the streets. They don't have driver licenses, drinking in the streets and everything. Especially after this holiday, you know, lover's holiday. I saw at least seven stops. They took their cars away because they were drinking. Another thing, it's a fair growth, goes to the little children centers that we have right there. We need to put speed bumps in there. We have small children, a lot of people going in and out. We need something right there. Slow down the traffic right there. We have the American Baldwin Park baseball right there too. Gotta be careful. We're gonna get one of these kids run over. Another thing that I see in the mornings is, police department, not only the city, but the school police department, we're gonna have to people, which is good. They gotta learn. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening, council. I'm a little rusty. I haven't been up here in a while. I have the, my comments are mainly to the project, as the newspaper said, San Gabriel. And New York usually puts their projects on the outskirts of the city, not downtown in the middle of the city. And we're cramming in these homes or apartments, 72. And you can kind of relate to them as a garage. I looked up on the internet while we're going through all the speeches here. A two-car garage is, works out to 22 by 22. Well, the one-bedroom is 22 by 25. Then we can step up to a two-bedroom. That's a three-car garage. 30 by 24, and that works out to 32 by 25 for an 809 two-bedroom. Why are we putting sardine cans in here? You wouldn't let Bisno build this. I don't know what this builder, this developer has on the council that he's gonna come in here and underbuild what we already set as city codes. Why are we doing that? Why are we not, we ignoring the traffic studies that really should have been done that show 882 cars more are gonna be passing through this intersection over here? How are you gonna handle that? You got, you got a stoplight gonna go over here? You got a train here going both ways? Then you have people that'll be here in the center, the project, and they've gotta get groceries. How are they gonna cross the street? Maybe someday we'll put that bridge over there that they show in the futuristic deal. But for the time being, they're gonna be pushing their shopping carts, because they're gonna bag the shopping cart over from Superior, and they're gonna push it over there. And you're gonna have shopping carts all sitting out in front of the Urban X and the Taco Place. Because they're not gonna carry their groceries over. And then you expect low-income people to ride the train? They can't afford that. That's a luxury. They're gonna have cars. Then this builder wants to come in here. He wants to pay for only 72 parking spaces. Why? Because it's a lot of money. He's gonna save $630,000 by not paying what he should pay, the 107, one and a half parking, one and a half stalls per unit. And then you have no control on how many cars are gonna be parked there. He swore in the planning commission, I have control on that. And these people will sign a thing. Well, that doesn't mean anything. How do you prove that those people have more than one car? You don't. And they're gonna be blocking up all this transit area. They're gonna be bringing in their own, their people to come and visit them. Where's that parking at? Transit center? Have you figured that one in? No. You haven't figured in the traffic, how you're gonna get the people in and out in the morning? You haven't figured out that you're gonna be using up most of your transit center to park these people here. Now, the way the thing should have been built is on the south side and put the parking that you had, the transit center in now, and bring the people that really ride the train, bring them into the transit center, because that's what those federal funds, county funds, and state funds were for. They're not to sell off these parking spaces.
Mr. Tettl, your time's up.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Tettl. Appreciate that. Moving along with public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, now, I will now declare the public communication closed.
Mayor, I just wanted to make a couple of statements, and I know there was some issues that came up in regard to our Parks and Recreation Directors. I just wanted to clarify some figures. We were given a sheet here of some numbers. It states that Manny Carrillo makes $255 an hour. That would be $530,400 a year. That takes us like to the level of people in Bell. I can guarantee you, he does not make $530,000 a year. He makes $140,000 a year. It's on our website, $139,000 plus healthcare, dental, vision, and whatever other employees get. You know, Mr. Carrillo is a full-time employee. He works weekends, evenings, puts a lot of time, puts staff reports together, to do grants, to do a lot of work that he does here in the community. And so, directors at that level, it's about what they're making, which is about comparable to what is here on this particular sheet that shows what other directors make. Matter of fact, at $140,000, he would be less, making less money than the city of Carmers, south, well, not south of Monte, but in Duarte. So with a park this size and the facilities, he's probably about making it about right. He does have a degree, because when we did hire him for that position, he does have a formal education. So I know that Julian Casas, like a lot of other city employees, would like a raise, and we're going through our budget right now, and we're going to give and try to look at the best benefits we can give, not just one employee, but all of our employees together. When the time's right, we're gonna work on those items. So, you know, we just wanted to make those comments. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. And I just wanna, just for the public, those of you that probably got this information, first of all, this one particular letter here, I think it's very interesting, and whatever, but nevertheless, this is interesting, because he places the city of Carmers, south of Monte and Duarte, and then we're at $193,000. I mean, the sad part about it, this happens every time. When the person comes up here, brings these youth here, and then they're misinformed. Now, they left tonight, assuming and thinking that Manny Carrillo makes $200,000. Now, or $255,000. Now, if he made that per hour, that would be, what, 40 hours a week, 40 hours per week? That'd be about $10,200. I mean, that's the sad part, that these youth left here, they're coming up here, they're emotional about the whole, the whole thing, but again, being misinformed. It's on the website, and I hope somehow that they're given this particular type of information, because there's no doubt that Manny Carrillo is extremely well-respected, not only to San Gabriel Valley, but out to the county as well for the great accomplishments that he has conducted here in the city of Baldwin Park. And that's evident by the senior programs and by the multitude of individuals that have come around him to support him. But again, anyone could come up here and literally make up a story, and by law, you're protected. So that was a fabricated, well fabricated statements that were made here, totally untrue and not fair towards Manny Carrillo. I admire Manny for you, sitting there, having a look on to individuals that are coming up here. And I'm not gonna blame the youth that follow the particular individual, whose name I will not mention, but it is, it's not right that he's programming and bringing these individuals here to falsify information that has no merit whatsoever. As the mayor of Baldwin Park, I'll tell you, I support you 100% as the city council and the residents of Baldwin Park, Manny, because you have hundreds and thousands of people that would come and stand with you here. But that's the unfortunate thing, and again, the law allows anyone to come up here and make up any type of story, and there's nothing we could do legally. That's just the reality of that. All right, your council member, Susan Rubio.
Well, I just, you know, to clarify the points that were made, I've asked Manny Carrillo if he feels comfortable sharing his educational background for the public's knowledge, and he would like to share his education.
Sure. I'm a graduate of Montebello High School, attended Mount St. Antonio Community College, and graduated in physical education from Cal State University, Los Angeles. It was called physical education back then. Today it's called kinesiology. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanna make one comment, is that I'm a very good friend of Ralph Nunez, who originally ran the Parks and Recreation. And I do believe that he would not have handed over the reins to someone that he did not feel was qualified... feel was qualified to fill that position. As much as he still loves the city of Baldwin Park, I don't think that he would have done that. So Manny, sorry, we just have to listen to this.
Mayor, and I just wanna make one more comment. It's very difficult to give a dollar amount per hour in these positions in particular, because what the public needs to understand, that everyone works around the clock, it really is not an hourly job. I mean, this is the evening, and he's here, and I know we have a lot of community projects. As some of you, I think someone mentioned the concerts in the park. It's just a non-stop job. It's really twenty-four hours. If I call him at nine, he has to answer and respond to me, ten in the morning, weekends, holidays. And that's just the type of job it is. And it does require someone that's willing to give up their life, pretty much twenty-four seven, to be here. And so it's really hard to, you know, attribute a dollar amount per hour when it's really not an hourly job. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Right, and just real quick, and again, the, Julian is an excellent individual who's been here for years. I know his father, residents of Baldwin Park. And with all due respect, just to let the, the general audience know, it is a part-time job, you know, and, and most of these type of positions happen to be transitional type of jobs that, that people take and, and move on to a full-time career. And again, with all due respect to him, and the other individuals, they need to inform these other youth, what is the truth? And it's on the website, and I'm glad that we clarified it here tonight, that we just, again, the, these individuals that want to, or one particular individual is just program these other youth to believe what he wants them to believe. And again, he always has a tendency of leaving immediately prior to the council or myself making any comments to clarify what was brought up to the general public. So I'll end on that note. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into the consent calendar. I promise we'll be out of here before twelve midnight.
Hello, Mayor?
Monica.
Hello?
Oh, yes, oh, excuse me, council member Monica Garcia. Okay, go ahead, council member.
Hi, good evening. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number ten, please.
Okay, item number ten out of consent calendar. All righty. Council members wishing to pull any other item?
I'd like to pull item number eight.
Number eight. All righty.
And six.
And six. All righty, so at this point, I'll move to, for, oh, yes, and one more. Let me just also correct something that, that was brought to my attention, number, item number four, the proposed employment agreement. It should read where it said, it is, it is recommended that the city council approve and authorize a mayor to enter into the proposed employment agreement with chairman, for, so that's a correction, we're just adding, from the city attorney to mayor. That's what we're doing in that area, right? Thank you, the legal council, for reminding me on that. So at this point, I'll move consent calendars with the, with exception, item number six, eight, and ten. That's my motion.
I can.
Okay, she's second. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. At this point, we'll go out to item number six, requested by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, which is the reclassification of the boxing program staff. Vice Mayor?
Uh, Mayor, item number six, being that the, I guess one of the templates I read here, since they weren't too happy with the offer for the boxing coach, I would recommend that it be brought back to staff for evaluation and, and bring it in with the rest of the budget as we begin our review, so we could look at it at that point.
All right, okay. All right, so that, we need a motion for that, right? Okay, there's a motion, there's a second.
Yeah, that's a motion, so there's a second by, please.
I'll second.
Second, any objections? Seeing none, so move. Thank you. All right, the next one, which is item number eight, by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, award of contract for the construction of the Barnes Park Improvement to Principal's Contracting, Inc. Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
Uh, Mayor, again, this is a project brought about by the Parks and Recreation Department. It's a, a number of grants that were put together to fund this program. The improvements for Barnes Park will be a new fitness zone with shaded sale and expanded splash area with additional water play features, water efficiency recirculating water system, the installation of a multi-colored ADA compliant, resilient rubber surface at both play areas, and various concrete work throughout the site to achieve an ADA compliance. An expanded picnic area with a large shelter and additional seating and landscaping. All this was included in the bid that went out and to be built. So I just wanna see, let the city know that the city council and staff is working hard to improve the lives of our, our families out there in our parks, and try to make sure that they're updated and, and improved upon. Although I did read in the staff report that there's some funding that's needed to finish up a picnic shelter, so the Public Works Director could take a look at what other funds are available to, through grants. And I think CDVG does have some that, that we could use there. So some of the funding sources that we have are from the LA County Regional Park and Open Space District, it's a grant of three-hundred thousand dollars, a community development block grant of two-hundred and nine thousand, a Transportation Development Act, DDA, Article Three Program, one-hundred-and-ten thousand, the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, and that's Sean's group that was here earlier talking from the upper district, that's seventy-five thousand dollars, the Land and Water Conservation Fund for sixty thousand, the San Gabriel Valley Water Company for twenty-five thousand, the Cal Recycle Grant of seven thousand, that comes up to seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty dollars, and the construction contract is at eight-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, plus contingencies, so it's six-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-two. So, uh, good project, I hope that we built it on time. What's the timeframe for this project, Manny Carrillo?
The project, and actually, Mr. Wal, Director of Public Works, is going to oversee the construction element, but it's my understanding the project will be completed mid to late June.
Okay. And it starts when? Did you have a date here?
If, if the, if the council approves of the contract this evening, call to the contractor first thing in the morning, and try to get him started within the next ten days.
Okay, great. Maybe we could have a groundbreaking or something, I don't know. But, okay, thank you, I move approval of item number eight. Move approval of item number eight.
All right, oh, second. Okay, any objections? Seeing none, so move. Okay, so at this point, we're gonna do roll call on this one? Okay, oh, okay. I've been informed by the legal council, since we have council member Monica Garcia teleconferencing, that we need to take roll call for the record. So at this point, Madam City Clerk, so this is the yes on item number eight.
Mayor Protem, Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Um, council member Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Council member Cruz Baca?
Yes.
Council member Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Yes, okay, the motion passes, five zero.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, that motion was to approve one through four on item number eight, is that correct, even though you didn't say one through four?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, yes, that's correct.
Okay, yes, all right, thank you. All right, so the, so the motion reflects the items one through four. All righty. Okay, the next one, thank you, legal council. Next one is item number ten, requested by council member Monica Garcia, the adoption of resolution number twenty-fourteen dash zero-zero-three, authorizing a planning and design grant to the city of Baldwin Park for Walnut Creek Nature Park. So this is council member Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to pull this item to really highlight the work of Manny Carrillo and the Recreation and Community Services staff. In January of two thousand thirteen, we reached out to external partners, including Upper District Brian Urias, and just started to plant seeds with partners and the environmental, environmental groups and different water districts, and started to generate interest and excitement about revitalizing Walnut Creek Park. And it really goes back to just the perseverance, and, you know, it's just highlighting the gem that we have in Walnut Creek Park. And so we would not be here tonight approving this item, which I will move to approve, but we will not, we would not be here tonight, you know, discussing this item if it weren't for the efforts of Manny Carrillo, his staff, and our partners that we've been working with for the last year. So I'm very excited about this, and moving this forward, and engaging the community, so that we can really bring, breathe new life back into this beautiful park of ours. And I also do want to acknowledge that Manny Carrillo worked very closely with county supervisor Gloria Molina's office to secure a significant amount of money. And so I definitely want to say thank you, Manny, for this. And with that, I want to move to approve this item.
All righty, okay, there's a motion.
Uh, Mayor, again, I would, I would second that, and again, it's just a demonstration of Manny Carrillo's hard work, and with staff, and getting out there. I know a lot of times, it takes a lot of hours to put these grants together and make sure they're structured right, but in this case, like the other grant before, there was a number of components and agencies that you had to deal with, and I'm sure write grants for each one. This grant in particular probably took, I think there's like five or six groups in there that you had to put together and satisfy each one. So I wanna thank you for your hard work, Manny, good job, and, you know, my hat's off to you and all your staff. Thank you. And if you could thank them all for us, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, everyone. All right, so at this point, we're gonna do, you know, roll call. Madam City Clerk, there was a motion by council member Monica Garcia, and I, I guess I second it, right? So at this point?
Council member Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Council member Cruz Baca?
Yes.
Council member Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Yes, thank you, the motion passes five zero. All right.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, because number eight was an award of a contract, I think it's very important that we make it very clear, and there was some confusion here on the dais. For number eight, that was pulled off the consent calendar, the motion that was made by Mayor Protem was to award a construction contract to Principal's Contracting, Inc. in the amount of six-twenty-two, eight-oh-two, and to authorize the mayor to execute the attached agreement, and to authorize the director of Public Works to execute any necessary change orders, in an amount not to exceed ten percent of the original contract, and that all bid protests would be rejected. Was that your motion, Mayor Protem?
Oh, yes, correct, I did make that motion on item number eight.
All right, thank you, and thank you, legal council, for that. All right, so at this point, we'll go ahead and move over to reports of officers. The first one-
Sorry, Mayor, was that, was there a roll call vote for that?
Oh, yes, we did, yes, we did.
Did we do a roll call vote?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Mayor, on the report of officers, I would like to move number twelve. I know we've done this before with the Rome project, only because I feel there is a deadline, and I understand that. I'm not saying that I don't like the project.
Okay.
It's just that since I've come in this, after the fact, I really need some answers.
Okay.
And I would really like my concerns in writing to make sure that we're not handing over a project, and we will be, lose control. And I would like to direct Mark Castagnola, I guess that's who I directed to, correct, or to the city manager, that I would like in writing to see that the police department structure will be either, there will be a monetary compensation to help move their police, the parking structure, or the Sallyport, as it had been mentioned before. Also looking at some of the diagrams and some of the suggestions that were put forth by some of the police officers, as well as I would like clarification as to why the original contract said one-and-a-half spaces per unit, and it's gone down to seventy now. I would like a clarification of that. As well as making sure that the Rome management, or whoever will be managing the apartment complex, will put in force some type of a permit, so that the people that are using those parking structures that are tenants will be identified in the parking structure itself. If there are any other cars parked after a certain time, I would also like to see if they would pay for code enforcement to cite or to tow the vehicles that will be in the parking structure that do not belong to the permitted tenants. As well as the traffic signal. There was a traffic signal that was mentioned that is supposedly going on Bogart and Pacific as per the traffic study. I have not seen that in writing. I would like to see how that's going to work, being that we have another signal south of the railroad tracks at the corner of Downing and Pacific already. So I would like clarification of that as well, so that we can see everything, and I can visualize it and move forward with this project. Could we move it to a special meeting on Wednesday? Yes.
For next Wednesday?
Yeah, real quickly, I just wanna ask, I mean, the one, the items that need to be in writing, I'm not concerned with, but Mark, can you share about the parking space? I think that's something you could just answer right now, I believe. A one-and-a-half parking space.
I heard two questions. One question was about why was it reduced, the, the number of parking was reduced? That was an executive decision by the former city manager. The, actually, the DDA that the city council approved include up to one-hundred-and-three parking spaces, and those parking spaces were reduced down to seventy of one per, one per unit by the former city manager. So I don't think the applicant has any problem here tonight, we can ask him to clarify if you want to, but I don't think they would have any problem if we raised the number of parking dedicated to this project. Now, for the second question, related to how are we going to prevent other person to park in the parking structure, I would like to direct this to our Public Works Director, as to what kind of policy we, we have in place later on, in terms of either charging or regulating or gate or anything like this, that may be implemented at a later phase, if needs to be.
Uh, Mayor, there was a request to move this over to Wednesday.
To Wednesday, yes.
So that was a motion, I'll second it. I think all this discussion needs to be put in writing before we continue. I, I've received a lot of information in the last few days myself, and I need to read it myself and digest it, and all those questions that she's asked, that the councilwoman is asking for, I want it all in writing, because will we make this agreement? I don't want any misunderstandings that I thought, or you said, or you said twenty parkings, and, and, and we did ten. I mean, let's just get it right. This is like a contract, like we're buying a car, and, you know, if I ask for a certain kind of radio, I wanna make sure I get it, and, you know, let's get this thing down. And I know you and I have been going back and forth, but I want a clarification. And I, I received, like I said, a lot of information at the last minute, and we just need to sit down and get clarification. So I second that motion.
So at this point, you wanna make the, who made the motion to move this over? Okay, so it's been seconded by, by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, any objections? Seeing none, so move. Real quick, also, let me go back to, we'll do roll call, that's right, 'cause we have the conference. We'll do roll call, Madam City Clerk. Or City Treasurer?
Chris, then?
I approve, so I, my motion, yes to my motion.
Chris goes first.
Mayor?
Oh, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Monica, council member.
Yes, you know what, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing, but I did want to ask Mark Castagnola, by postponing this item until Wednesday, if it puts any funding in jeopardy for the project?
My understanding is that no, but let me confirm that with the applicant. Is there any issue on delaying the project by one week with regard to the application of the tax credit?
Um, formal applicant, sorry, good evening, my name's Megan Quiston-Berry, and I am the project manager from Rome Development Corporation. The TCAC funding application that's, has a hard deadline of March fifth, so we need, the big item is the CEQA document that needs to be approved, and we need to have that in order to get funding from the federal-
What's, what's, what's the deadline?
March fifth. So by next week, I mean, is the latest I can-
Okay, Mayor, again, I just, there was a vote made, it was voted on, and let's continue on to March, to Wednesday.
No, Wednesday.
Twenty-six.
The twenty-sixth.
February twenty-sixth.
Yes.
Thank you.
All righty, okay, so at this point, the question was called by, excuse me, by council member Monica Garcia, so at this point, we're gonna do roll call, go ahead.
Council member Cruz Baca?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Council member Monica Garcia?
I would prefer to take up the item tonight, so I'm gonna say no.
Council member Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Yes, okay, the motion passes, the vote is for one. All right, at this point, let me go back to item eleven, that we're going to request that this be taken back to staff to bring back in a future meeting. So I'll make that motion for item number eleven.
Mayor, can I also add a comment?
Go ahead.
I just want to point out that this item is for consideration of a mitigated negative declaration. And so what that is, is it's basically an assessment of the environmental impacts of the project. And I think that that's something that we really need to stay focused on, because- of the project, and I think that that's something that we really need to stay focused on because we've already been to the drawing board. We, this isn't the first, second, or third time that we've seen this project. This project has been brought to us, um, for, I want to say at least two years. And so we, you know, we were fine with the project, now we're looking at a mitigated negative declaration, and so, and the environmental, any environmental impact associated with the project. So I just want to, you know, be really clear that we're not going back to the drawing board, we're looking at the impact of the project that we had already approved, you know, and we're moving forward with. Um, I just, you know, I just wanted to let, let those thoughts be heard, because we've already, you know, we've, we've already fleshed out a project, and it's, it's okay to continue to, you know, let the project evolve, I'm not saying that it's not, you know, that's a good thing. It's, it's a very positive thing, especially as the community provides additional input, but I just don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater here and lose sight that a project that we have vetted for a couple of years at least is now before us for the environmental impact, and so let's not lose sight of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, uh, excuse me. Um, and primarily, this is because of, I am new at coming to look at this project, and it is true that it has been ongoing for a couple of years. However, I do not feel comfortable if I don't have my questions answered, and I would really like that, uh, discretion to be able to, to find the answers, to do my homework so that I can come up with something logical on Wednesday's meeting.
Makes sense, all right, all right, so at this point, we'll go back to, uh, roll call, Madam City, uh?
And Mr. Mayor, your, your motion is to pull item number 11 with instructions to staff to bring back to a future city council meeting?
That is correct.
Uh, Mayor, so the, the, just to add to that, we're, I'm pulling, is that?
Yeah, item number 11, which is the appeal of the planning commission, the fellow to reach a majority decision on the request for the conditional use permit. This is for the 27-bed adult residential on, on violent.
I'm sorry, just for, for, we already voted on item 12?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Okay, all right, go ahead. You want to move this one?
Yes, number 11, yes.
That's fine, go ahead.
All right, okay, so that's my motion, been seconded. Uh, any objections? And at this point, Madam City, I thought we're gonna go and take roll call.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Council member Cruz Baca?
Yes.
Council member Monica Garcia?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing, and I didn't hear the motion.
Okay, wait, okay, the, the motion right now i- is to move this over, uh, for a future date. This is the violent project.
I, I mean, I, I, I respect that, uh, council member Cruz Baca has questions on the project.
No, this is, no, this is a different one, my, uh, council Monica Garcia, this is totally different. It's item 11 on the agenda.
Item number 11.
Which is the, the, an appeal of the planning commission.
Thank you, yes, because we took it out of order, okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so what was the motion?
The, the motion is to move it, uh, to a, a, a future meeting. And, and we, what's your vote?
My vote is yes.
Okay, all right.
Council member Susan Rubio?
Yes.
So the motion passes. Five to zero.
All right, so the motion passes five zero, thank you.
Uh, Mayor, just, just for the record, I wanted to ask, uh, councilwoman, Monica Garcia, uh, I noticed on the agenda, you did not noted, the, uh, the conference room where you're in was not noted, so are you, are you in a, a conference room, an office, a lobby?
Council Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Okay, councilman, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco goes.
The question was, uh, to note it on the records, are you in a lobby area, a conference room? You know, what conference room number would that be?
Yes.
Yes, where are you?
Yes, you're in the lobby of the main building, or the conference room, or?
Uh, council, councilman Monica Garcia, anybody here? Vice Mayor is asking if you're in a conference room, or are you in the lobby? What, what is your location, where you're at, here in the meeting?
Yes, I'm in the lobby.
Okay, you're in the lobby of the main hotel building, okay.
All righty, okay.
And you did, you did post the, uh, agenda on there, someplace? You have a big crowd?
Say that again?
Did you post the agenda in the lobby?
Yes, the agenda is posted at the entrance of the hotel.
And, and imagine you have like hundreds of audiences there from North Carolina listening to you?
Can you repeat that?
It was a joke, but, okay.
NASCAR drivers.
All righty, okay, so at this point, we're gonna go over to the, uh, council, um, excuse me, city council acting as successor agency of the Community Development Commission, and there's consent calendar. I will move for consent calendar.
Hold on, Mayor, what, what part are you on here?
Oh, where, uh, item number 12, way at the bottom, where it says city council acting as successor agency of the Community Development.
Oh, consent calendar, and we have these five items?
Yes. Actually, there's only one, Ricardo.
Oh, what item is it?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a, a, a motion.
Motion second.
Any objections? Seen none, so move. All righty, so at this point, we'll go over to the request by, okay, roll call, yes, I keep forgetting because of Monica. Okay, at this point, we'll do a roll call on the successor agency. There was a, a motion, Vice Mayor seconded it.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Council member Cruz Baca?
Yes.
Council member Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Council member Susan Rubio?
Motion passes five zero.
All right, okay, thank you. At this point, we'll go over requests by Mayor Protem Ricardo Pacheco for discussion and direction to staff on the following. Councilmember, I mean, it's, Vice?
Yes, uh, Mayor, thank you very much. I, I would like to request that the, uh, council support me on forming a, an in-house committee, uh, to form an energy efficiency and green projects committee for the purpose of recommending and developing green projects for reduction of the city's, uh, carbon footprint. Uh, one of the things that I noticed was the city was not registered with the Edison's, uh, energy management program, and I want to be able to work with staff to, uh, create a baseline of, of how we use our energy and be able to report on that at least quarterly, and how use that information that is available to us to be able to tell our residents how we're using our energy. We spend more than a, a million dollars, uh, annually on, uh, energy and electricity in particular, and, uh, I know that the city's moving in a direction, um, the city manager is, is starting to look at solar energy projects, and I want to make sure that if we're putting those in, that we're using them efficiently and that we're, we have a way to make sure that they're, uh, actually producing the amount of energy that it takes so that we're, we're recognizing the savings, uh, that we have, and I think it's important that we become examples for our community, that if we're going into the direction of solar and other energy-saving, uh, uh, types of projects, that we have a way to measure that and that we have a way of, of looking closely at, um, being the role model for our city so that other, uh, businesses and residents throughout, uh, our city look at that and, and move forth on that. So, uh, hopefully, I would like if, uh, maybe councilwoman, uh, Rubio would like to join me in that committee, would be two of us, and indicated as a, uh, monthly meeting that would be held here in City Hall with the public and with our director of public works. Um, that's a motion.
I'll, I'll second that, I think that's important, it's a really great idea, so I would second that.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Also, the, the other point that I have is, is if, um, we could start taking a look at, at trucking check, checkpoints on Arrow Highway, or maybe throughout the city. Uh, as I drive through Arrow Highway, I notice that there's a lot of, uh, trucks that drive through the business hours, and a lot of them seem to be, uh, either overloaded or unsafe for driving on the roads, and it does have a concern for me that if we have some accident in that area, and so I would like staff to come back and, uh, maybe two meetings from now, uh, to come back to see what, you know, what the police department could do in, in looking at, uh, traffic safety in, in regards to, uh, uh, large, uh, trucks that are driving through Arrow Highway and throughout the city, or any other major artery that the city has, though there's a lot of, uh, truck traffic, uh, passing through. Um, all right, Mayor, I want that, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, at this point?
Um, I have, I would like to, um, I would like to direct Mr. Graves to please, uh, poll the RFPs. I'm doing a little research right now. I still want to go ahead with the audit, but if we could please notify the 10 agencies, firms that you, that at this time, we're going to be researching and looking at something else. Thank you.
Mr. Graves, well, uh, you may not know, but if you can look into it, I want to know if we ever had, um, a committee, an audit committee, a community citizen committee in the past, and if we did, can you bring that information forward? It's something that I would like to consider, but if we've had it in the past, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, it would be nice just to see what the format looked like. If not, then we can talk about forming one. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And one, one last thing, I had a couple of residents this weekend that I was visiting want to know, and I know I don't think we have a policy, there's a lot of these trucks that are being parked through neighborhoods, Main Boulevard, that are overloaded with all kinds of recycling types, so, I mean, they're just becoming, uh, uh, something big in Baldwin Park, residential areas where you have some residents who are complaining, saying, "I have a right to have my house looking nice, but I don't," uh, what, I mean, what type of ordinance do we have on that? And I don't think we have anything, I don't, certain.
Mayor, Mayor, I spoke about that with, uh, with our director of community services, uh, with Mark, and, uh, he spoke with Terry Muse, and, uh, what came up, and I think he's working on, is we don't have an ordinance at this point, I know what you're talking about, there's a lot of trucks that have advertisement with spray paint and so forth.
That's right.
However, they're decorated, U-Haul, WeHaul trash and all that stuff, so, uh, there, there are cities that have ordinances that do not allow commercial parking during certain hours, and so there, there are ways to mitigate those issues. So, but I would like to direct our city attorney to look into those issues and to work with staff, to come back with a policy, um, I don't, is the next meeting too soon?
No, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, whatever you.
I mean, can we, can we put a policy together that quick, or do you need a couple of meetings?
Yes, yes, uh, excuse me, yes.
This has been a concern, it's been brought up before, uh, by some of the citizens in council. Um, Director Dan Wall is currently looking into different policies that'll address this issue along with the city attorney, so we're on top of this. Also, uh, in regards to your other concern that you had about the, uh, large commercial trucks on our major highways, uh, we have a full-time, uh, we're one of the lucky cities that has a full-time certified commercial enforcement officer by the name of Ted Espanto. Uh, he gets out on a fairly regular basis, and he looks for, uh, trucks that are overweight, that are, um, hauling loads that they shouldn't be, uh, along with the California Highway Patrol, he works in tandem with them, uh, as well as our motor officers who he, uh, trains to do that. Just so you know, we are out there and we're looking for that, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
And, uh, Mayor Protem?
What?
It, it, it is important to note that the acting E.T. manager is ahead of the curve on this, and he has asked me to look up ordinances from other cities, which I'm collecting now, and there are several different options that I'll be presenting to the acting E.T. manager.
Thank you, you guys read our minds.
All right, this time, I'll move for German.
Mayor, I have something for the chief and for Mr. Walls. I have had a few residents approach me in regards to Los Angeles Street, approaching the 605 freeway, I don't remember the name of the street, but it's a four-way stop, it's only stop.
Yes.
It's very congested.
Yes, extremely.
So the traffic getting through that street, they've, I've had a few complaints, if we can look into, put a light there, maybe you can have that checked, see how the traffic is flowing.
You know which one it is?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have the public works director take a look at that, that would be under his preview. Uh, basically, we decide them if they run the, uh, stop signs that are in place or whatever is there, but he would have to do a study, it involves a survey, is that not correct, Dan?
Yes, that is correct. We'll, we'll, we'll take a look, we'll do a, a traffic study of that intersection.
I will let them know, thank you.
All right. All righty, so at this point, unless anyone has any other questions, I want, move for German, that's my motion.
Mayor, I, I'm sorry, I had one more item.
Go ahead.
Um, and, and if, if the, uh, public works director could look into it, there's, uh, um, outside the yard the other day, there was an issue with an asphalt machine, I think staff is asking, what's the, you know, what's, what are we gonna do with that machine? Um, you don't have to answer now, but, but if we could.
I, I could, actually.